You haven't figured out your way around yet?
Yeah.
We're supposed to be going on this one.
I was.
Yeah.
Good for you.
I feel most out with lectures.
No problem, thank you.
We didn't hit the number.
Thank you.
I never see somebody.
Alright, we call the meeting in order. Sarah, your own call?
Okay. Mayor Meney?
Here.
Brennaman?
Here.
Keel?
Present.
Monahan?
Here.
Glazer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Here.
And Jones is absent with notice.
Alright, we have motion to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We have motion for minutes of eight twenty two thousand nineteen?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Upstayed.
Okay. Minutes of special twenty twenty budget meeting, eight twenty six?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Any mobiles submitted for payment? Terry, was there anybody from the public that wanted to make public comment? I don't want to get that out. Okay. Okay. We'll go on to first reading the word at six seventy eight, twenty twenty appropriations. Any questions or anything that Teresa had out there for us? Do we have any motions? Would you like any more background from Teresa?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, what are you gonna say?
I'm just gonna make a motion to approve first reading, word at six seventy eight.
Second.
Alright, discussion. None? Campbell? Nelson?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Okay. Eddie Ryan couldn't be here tonight. We'll move on to Mitch with, uh, a general report.
Yep. Um, just a couple things in the report. As Travis pointed out, we were hoping to have that street paved last week. Things changed with contractor's schedule, obviously, so we were hoping to have that paved this week. Um, and then the last one was something like sidewalks and whatnot to finish up out there as well. And along with ceiling.
They put sidewalks, I'm both say, right?
Yeah.
All the way.
Well, not on, uh, not on what's not developed. So not against Mr. Higgo's or the Nat property. The Nat property will put their sidewalks in there maybe.
As they hill bits.
Okay. Yeah. Um, other than that, just one other quick update. I've been, well, I was just out at the sports complex. The grass is coming up. It's a little slow coming up right now, but it's, it's coming, so we'll just keep monitoring that. Um, other than that, we had two action items, uh, that we wanted to discuss. And the first one looks like it's the change order number two on Vandermark Avenue. If you remember, this is, was the change order that was presented a month or so ago. It was to do additional work on the stretch of Ninth Street, uh, east of Vandermark to Parkey. Um, basically that road, you know, how, that last spring, that road just didn't help but hold up. Had to be basically closed before our contractor even got there. Um, it needs some improvement to really keep it open during the spring and fall. So this would need to overexcavate it, um, get to a stable grade and put, uh, I think we have eight inches of gravel back there into it. But that again, that would be from Vandermark Avenue all the way to Parkey Drive. And it sounds like there was some discussion at the last meeting about whether the city wanted to make that investment or not, so we're here to discuss, yeah.
The price hasn't gone up for me.
Well, yeah, this is the same thing we presented last time.
Last time was, what do you think?
Any motions or?
Motion to approve change order number two on Vandermark for the sum of sixty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Discussion, questions? I know the last thing we should discuss, there's, um, some sentiment that the Knights should be closed or maybe seasonally closed or closing until further notice. I've had a few requests personally, does that be closed? No one personally has ever approached me about keeping it open. Um, but I think the assumption is that it will stay open, so. Is there any other community outreach?
So speak regarding this.
I mean, I've been approached, same thing. So, I mean, my understanding is they're supposed to lay it up in... What am I trying to say? It was bid and it would be a road. So why do we have to pay sixty-four thousand dollars to make it a road?
Yeah, the bid that we had was, you know, where they put the storm sewer. First of all, it's gonna go all the way to Parkey, so it doesn't cover that portion of it. And then the contract basically says for them to dig in their utility, which was a storm sewer, and then top it with, with gravel. Okay, so that's only half the roadway that they were really, um, restoring, I guess with the gravel that they have in their job. So this would basically undercut the entire roadbed and restore it from, from that grade.
I've walked, I've walked that stretch. It, it is a bad shape. I mean, it's, it's as much dirt and, and, and sand.
Yeah.
I mean, you're impressed to find gravel.
Dude, I mean, there was nothing. You, that gravel that was there was mostly sandy ground. And it was a couple inches deep is really all there was. Really, there wasn't anything to salvage.
It's, it's a bad shape, so.
Yeah.
And are they redoing the bridges also?
Yep, they'll fix those up and get those to, you know, grave in that, basically back to, I mean, they're pretty close to what they were before, but they, if you notice, you go down there, it's wide enough, the roadway, because they just... And they're planning to do that regardless of whether this gets approved. They do, still have some work to restore that. Um, but this is just a little bit, this is more, putting more effort into there to get to a stable grade. Basically hauling a lot of that dirt out, bring in good material.
Do you remember when that got brought up Mitch, that change order?
Mitchell didn't hear that, did he?
It was in July.
Yeah, I know, I know I was gone at that meeting that he had it presented up there.
My question is, why, why did it get presented in July?
As opposed to earlier?
Last year. When we're talking about North Vandermark, you know, we, we beat that horse to death and nobody mentions East, East Ninth Street. He doesn't get brought up until July.
Um, I don't know, I guess.
You, you understand what I'm saying? Why, why, why does it have to be a change order? Why wasn't it just part of project?
I guess when we designed it, we didn't anticipate having that much trouble with that road. We didn't realize it was in that bad shape when we designed it.
This spring was the worst I've ever seen it myself. I mean, it just fell apart.
So this spring was the struggle?
Yeah. Just, just all this wet, last year and a half of wet weather and that stuff, this spring just really, really hurt.
So last fall was okay?
I mean, it wasn't, and we even, we knew about that when we put the bids together, that there wasn't much sell with your gravel, because I knew there wasn't much gravel on it. Um, but we, like I said, it just, there was no structure left after the spring in spots, you know? Some of it was good, some of it was terrible.
Craig, do we have a system in place to check the quality of our gravel roads like we do our asphalt roads?
Not like we do our asphalt, no. I mean, we blade them, we know, like when I'm blading, I can tell if I'm getting thin, you know, down to clays and black dirt or, you know? Them roads, like Ninth Street and Vandermark, all those roads got put together years ago and all they did is they took the dirt that was in the, that's how the ditches got formed, is they took that dirt, just threw it up and made a road out of it. So it's a lot of, it's clay, black dirt, whatever there was in the ditches, that's what got the rocks, whatever, just got thrown up in there, threw some gravel on them. You know, we, we throw a certain amount of gravel every year on them, you know, just to try to keep them in shape, but, you know, as far as scare fire and, and we opened them, we ain't got the equipment for it. Do I think this, we need to do it? I mean, it might, like I said, it's just, could be one of those maintenance things where we, next spring, if it's, falls apart again, we just leave it. I mean, shut it down for two, three weeks until it starts to stabilize itself and then work it up. Going the other side by the trailer courts, that really one, you know, flew apart too and that.
I think that's what triggered us to pursue the Ninth Street on that side too, is the spring, just because that road wasn't holding up.
We threw some extra trucks on it and it really pumped that mud and stuff up into them, so.
Well, having lived up, um, there for fourteen years, um, I've seen some pretty bad springs, pretty well. It's not uncommon to see a car stuck on Ninth or even on Vandermark there, so. The, I will speak to the, uh, quality of Vandermark this spring. I was, I was suspect at best of how that was gonna hold up, given our late project and it's, you know, they didn't really get a lot of traffic on it before winter hit, but this spring it, it...
It formed well.
It outperformed Ninth Street.
Isn't that made a difference? I mean, what you had, basically, because that sewer project went through there, and how they rebuilt that is basically what we're proposing with this.
Not to that depth by a, you know, we're... Right, you would, would you say the top foot of Ninth would be?
Well, on that, so on that sewer job on Vandermark, they, they, uh, put in eight inches of gravel on that.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, and how deep is the storm sewer on Ninth?
On Ninth, it's five to six feet deep.
Five or six, so. So it's got some base, it's got some compaction back on top of it.
So if we don't do it and they just do it as a bid, and it turns to crap, and we decide we need to redo it, what's that gonna cost?
Well, um, you know, I, I think it would roughly be the same if you were to rebid it.
Okay.
And I think that's something else to talk about. We've been trying to work in the soak up about Ninth Street to the west. And I was hoping to have another change order for you tonight to add that option. And they basically are backing off from that project. They're just, I think they're getting cold feet because they just can't fit in their schedule. Um, pricing wise, they weren't able to honor their pricing from this year into next year, specifically like asphalt and concrete, their subs weren't staying behind their numbers. So I think we're, we need to rebid that, we need to bid that project out anyway. So we would have an option to bid this work east of Vandermark with that work, make it one project. That'd be the other option.
Wait, so now we're not paving Ninth West on Vandermark?
Not as, not with soak ups contract. Because, like I said, they can't, there's a number of things that have kind of sprung up. The gas company has to relocate all their gas lines along there. And MidCo has a line that's in the way too, so they gotta relocate. And so to get those guys in there and get their facilities out of the way is just, is turning into a bigger job than anticipated and then soak up anticipated. So they basically told me that they can't commit to getting that project done, any part of it this year. And their subs are, their underground subs are backed up too, from what I understand. Um, because last year we were talking, we were talking about getting utilities done this year, trying to pave the next year, and they, they backed away from that even now. So I think we're in a position where we just need to finish this contract out in Vandermark, bid Ninth Street from Vandermark to, to the west as a package and possibly add this portion to the east along with it. Okay? Or, now talking about the portion of the east, we could still contract the soak up and have it done, get it done now before the end of the year, so don't have any issues in the spring, because if you, if you bid it out with another job, that work won't get done until next spring. But again, you could just, you know, if you package it in one package, you could just close that road. You just better, you should plan on having to close it in the spring.
Mitch, uh, Teresa's notice said we might want to consider having the city staff at least bring some loads of gravel into it and ask it. Uh, you see any issue with that?
To the, on the east side?
East side.
Anywhere?
Yeah.
You know, once the contractor's done, I mean, we'll, we'll bring in gravel enough to, to, I mean, we've got enough gravel planned to bring in six inches of gravel. Okay? So it probably would help to put a little bit more loads on there now that we can do that through soak ups contract or the city could provide that.
Well, if we can save some money, is that the city doing it and, what, Craig, your take?
Yeah, it depends on what they're, what they're actually charging per ton to haul and everything like that, because usually the, your expenses in your hauling, but I mean, if it's not that much, I mean, they're hauling side dumps where they're hauling twenty-two, twenty-five. But we're hauling twelve ton, I mean, so, I mean, they're hauling twice load, so they're charging eighty dollars or a hundred dollars a load to bring it in, plus the gravel costs.
But if we're gonna undercut it, it doesn't make sense to bring any gravel on there until we have that decision made.
Yeah, so here's the right stand.
Yeah.
I don't want to spend the money on change order number two until we have a fair debate about closing that road. So, I mean, I'm not in favor of this right now. And I'm pretty disappointed to hear this news about going last Sunday. I will say the number we're looking at here, the one on there doesn't have mobilization. So, uh, we may never see this number even next year if we decide to bid Ninth to the west and we option out that from Vandermark to Parkey and it comes in at eighty-five thousand, we're gonna look pretty silly. So, but yeah, there's a lot. There's a lot more questions than answers at this point. This is the only real answer we have, is it's gonna cost us sixty-five thousand dollars to fix that.
Which we don't want to hold up.
They're, you're pretty much guaranteeing it will hold up.
If you do, if you do this, this will hold up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's where I would, I will say, I will speak to the fact that this is the same, uh, basically spec that Vandermark had on it. This spring it held up quite well. It had held up well, I mean, I've got without question. I questioned whether it would and I was surprised that it didn't, so.
Alright, any other discussion? Any motion in the second? Campbell? Allen?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Nope.
Keel?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Change order number two, next up is pay application number thirteen.
Yep, this is pay application number thirteen. Um, basically this, they've reached substantial completion and where the contract reads is we can repay ten percent on the contracts, or the contract requires that we pay out five percent of it at this stage. I'm sorry that did not make it packaged, but that was, you should have the...
Hide the link.
So this is five percent of the remaining ten, Mitch?
Yep. Do you guys have a copy of that up there?
I, I did PDF it with, because I can have the copy, but you can click on the hide.
If you click on your, that link in our report, you should pull it up.
You're quicker working.
They're really good.
I'm like, a motion to approve pay application number thirteen. Second.
Okay, discussion. None? Oh, Nelson?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Monahan? Anything else from Mitch?
Help me understand this Ninth Street West. I mean, we approved to do that, how long?
We approved a resolution necessity this spring. People, me, the hallway?
Yeah. It, it probably took us longer than I expected to put the plans together. Like, that's probably part of it. Um, and it's just, like I said, it's just, it turned out to be a bigger project than we expected with, with the private utility companies and with easements. And we still have some easements out there that we gotta chase down with Mr. Higgo and One Lane Order to the south, so we're working on that as well. But, like I said, we did the best we could to get it done and in the contractor's hands as quickly as we could. It just took longer than we expected.
Um, you mentioned MidCo. MidCo has a line running through Ninth?
Yep, MidCo and Golden West.
Oh, they're coming off that, uh, I suppose they're coming off that water tower.
Yeah. Yep, and then at that grade at the far west end, we cut it down about four feet.
Yeah.
So it just affects a lot of facility type stuff, but, yeah.
Water main's gonna have to get lowered too, so.
Yeah, that was, that was the other thing, is we had to design a whole new water main through there because, because of the road getting cut down. It just, you know, when, when we're at trim lane, you say, you don't have, know all that, so once we get into the final design, I mean, start to understand it better, it just turned out to be more work than we expected.
We're also looking at, um, the sewer too up there. We're gonna bring it extended to the, go into the west, so that the trailer courts on, on the east side there, the first two or three rows, we're gonna bring them down, so we can connect them onto that line. That way we can abandon about three hundred feet of plate pipe in there, that's really shallow. So we're gonna, that's part of this here too, we're looking at doing is eliminating some of that plate pipe and putting them on a new sewer, sewer line, basically.
Who does that affect?
It affects the trailer courts, uh, there's the ones that, everybody else is already, well, B rebuilt, is on that line, uh, the right road repair building, and then the, um, the first three rows, I think it is, of the trailer courts.
Okay.
So bring all those people down and get them off that plate line that's super flat and shallow, so.
Now, that's my, uh, that's my biggest concern is what's, if, if we know that Ninth to the east of Vandermark is gonna be in tough shape, I'm scared to think what Ninth to the west of Vandermark is gonna look like in the spring.
Alright, anything else from Mitch? Next up is Craig.
I'm just gonna throw a few things out to quick. Um, let's kind of talk a little bit to Teresa and Mitch a little bit about it, but if we end up going off our bids on going to the west on Ninth Street there, something to consider is maybe doing a resolution necessity on Fourth Street, wanting the gravel there. See if they are against it, if they are, then tell them, well, we can't fix your water problems unless we do this street. Um, figure about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is what it costs to do that. Um, putting some pump collection system in there and just see if they, I mean, something to consider and just see if they're willing to fork over their portion of it and get it done. And if they don't, then say, can't help your water problems, you know, type thing, so. Something to think about, I mean, if, we definitely don't need to do it, just throwing it out there, if I mean, if we end up bidding this out, it'd be a good time to throw that in there, so.
We put that on the agenda for next, our next meeting, so we can discuss that maybe more in depth and get those, get those property owners here hopefully. Because we haven't heard anybody from Four.
Well, it's drying, it's drying off, so.
Right, I know, but yeah, we've never heard anything from Fourth Street come, you know?
So, something to consider.
Where, where did that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar number come from?
It just got from Mitch. Because we want to have any storm sewer in there.
That was us just by...
We're just correcting some numbers real quick, like, so there, it could be a different number, but like we were talking.
Is that, is that what the contingency, Mitch?
That's assuming there's no utility work.
Yeah, there's no utility work. So we're just figuring just some pump collection line, um, leaving the water sewer alone because it's all PVC.
Just out of curiosity, why do we assume there's nothing extra? Why don't we assume there's all kinds of bad stuff and then present that number? Why don't we assume that the subgrade is awful soil? Why don't we assume we have to move utilities? Why don't we assume we have to move water and sewer and to replace it? Why don't we assume that one? Instead of assume that we're just gonna come in there, cut it down, put a base, curb better, an asphalt, and everybody's happy for a quarter of a million? Because it, I don't even remember one case where that happened, ever. Okay, you think the one case that ever happened?
Building railroad. We just came in and built it. No, most time, like I said, you end up having some utilities in your way.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty sounds, that sounds great.
Yeah. But I think when it comes to... Just throw together, just asphalt and curb and, and some pump collection, yeah, like I said, they have to definitely sit down and start getting some more numbers, but just something to throw out there.
Remember that time they finished Eastern and we didn't even know about it? And shit, I think they were right on with what they figured that was gonna cost.
We literally discussed this five minutes before.
I remember when they did the bike trail on Turtle Creek Park Travis, and the engineer sat there and he said...
I was waiting for that.
We, we didn't know, we didn't know the soils were bad. We had a one-hundred percent over run of gravel, one-hundred percent. They missed it by one-hundred percent and they did know the soils would be bad right next to the creek.
Who'd have thought?
Who'd have thought? Who'd have thought that's where you're gonna find poor soil?
Yeah, everybody.
Alright.
To move on to my, uh, reports, uh, for water net stuff, uh, samples were taken for a stage two and sent in. And then, um, on, uh, under sewer, we did receive that last, uh, radio for the four G, that's the dialer system. Um, everything, if, if it's not updated by the end of the year, they won't work because they changed everything in four G. Um, so we got our last radio in, we'll be changing that out this week and have that out of the way, so we'll all up to date and ready to go. And lagoons, we are discharged, we grabbed samples here a week and a half ago, and then again, I guess about a week and a half ago, got the results back on Friday, everything looks good. Um, I think we're gonna be able to discharge two ponds down and be in compliance, so, always looking right now. And that is all I have on my report, unless somebody's got something.
Question on the water meters? What's our current? Alright, we're phasing our water meters out. What is our existing water meter? What brand and who makes it?
Badger meters. We're, so we're keeping the, uh, Badger meter.
Yeah.
We're just changing out the way of sending the system out, uh, the numbers out. So it's going from, uh, laptop read to Verizon read and send a signal right to City Hall.
So, we're not in a position where, do we have a warranty on those water meters? Per se, the Badgers?
Yeah, the meter itself, I, so many years and so many thousands or millions of gallons, I mean, we're not replacing the base, that's getting left, it's just a technology part of it.
So is it, are we in a situation where the, we use the Galaxy brand transmitters with our Badger water meters?
Um, I, I know we've kind of looked into it, some of that, you're gonna end up having two different systems, too many, two different, uh, for Rhonda to actually gather the information to be, I don't know if they can do it through Banney or not, I'm not sure.
The point of asking all these questions is, there's another utility municipality in our sixty mile radius that has the same water meter. And, uh, they're just not making those water meters, they don't make replacement parts for them, and so they're, they're in a position where they're forced to change over. And I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna be in a position where that was gonna happen to us, maybe we just overlooked something or...
So the, the Model forty, which is the one inch ones, they did discontinue that one. Um, and so it will be, those, as they start to leak, which that's why they're discontinued, they, there's a bad, um, design with them, whatever, so by the threads they'll start to leak. Um, we've been replacing them out, they've been warranting them all along time. Um, they are discontinued, that one there, that one's no longer available. Um, we do have like three of them on the shelf just in case, so we can get, keep them going. Otherwise, those will be changed over to the new, um, it's the E series, which is, um, they don't have any moving parts anymore, everything's just solder or whatever, so. But, yeah, it's, as far as the technology part of it, it's about the same price from one to the other, so.
Anything else for Craig? Thank you, Craig. We got Karen's report in her package, she's on vacation this week. And any questions or additions on Teresa's, Teresa's report?
I just want to point out on my report that, um, the Vandermark tax bond, it did go out for sale and we got a very good pricing on it, so they figured, and say, you know, we talked about with insurance, we'd save about ninety thousand, we actually, in the law, we're gonna say about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. So it was good that we put the insurance on it, they thought that really helped the sell of it, so we'll actually plan on closing, they're doing all the paperwork now here on the seventeenth, so we'll get that. Money wired, we'll close on it, get the money wired over to us and start reimbursing our bills, so. Um, and then, um, the, our wage compensation report that we're having done by the Western Group, I did check on that this last week to see where that is, and actually, they are, I'm gonna meet with them on Thursday, we're gonna go over a preliminary draft, so I hope I'll have something to you guys by your next meeting or thereafter to, to go over and to kind of get that information to you guys, see what they come up with. Um, joint jurisdiction, um, I gotta talk to Mark. You know, you weren't there, but the rest of you were there. You know how that went. The county commissioners had concerns of wanting to meet with the property owners on the front side, which is fine. They sent me over a list of, um, residents that are in our growth area. We have about a hundred and forty-four. So we can hold a meeting with them, um, talked a little bit with the planning and zoning board at their last meeting, told them what happened. Me and Jeremy kind of talked briefly. We thought we have a meeting sooner rather than later while it's still fresh in everybody's mind. I didn't know, um, we were thinking doing an add a planning and zoning meeting, like so it'd be a seven o'clock meeting on Tuesday. We can either do it later this month. They have one on the twenty-fourth. Or maybe even possibly the first meeting October, then the October eighth. I don't know if that's getting too late or not. I'd like to invite you guys too. I'd like to invite the county commissioners. I'd just like to have everybody present for the discussion or who can be. Do you guys have a preference of, do you like to see that meeting?
Shouldn't the county be doing this?
Well, but in our lap, remember?
But it's their people.
Yeah, I know.
It is a, it is our request though. They're not requesting.
Don't matter. If they're not here to listen to their own people that they represent, why should we have a meeting? Let me use this example. If I have, if I'm a property owner and I'm gonna put a gravel pit in. Uh, and I go to the county planning and zoning, I go to the county commission, they approve it, it's not a done deal. I have to post that, right? I post that, that says I'm gonna.
Right.
Put that gravel pit in. Is, or who sends the neighboring property owners a letter?
The county does.
The county does. The county does that. So why are.
Oh, I, 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 no, I back up. I should say the county does. It's whoever wants to put that gravel pit.
They have to say.
They have, the county sends up a list of names, like you said, so it's, yeah, so it's kind of the same thing. The county sends a list of names. When we wanted to do the conditional use for, um, um, our dump site out on that five acres. Um, I, they gave me the list of names, but I had to notify those people in that area that this is what we want to do, so. So it's kind of the same thing.
I'll come down and.
Yeah.
I think if we wanted that, then we should also be, cause I think that I'd rather have our, I'd rather be the host of it than, than let the county commission.
Run it, right.
That's fine. Set it up as soon as possible, is my opinion. I would, uh, I'd make the recommendation to not have it here. Because you put planning and zoning in this building and city councilor in this building and the county commissioner in this building. And forty upset people that live outside of city limits and this thing's gonna be. Too hot. It's gonna be hot. It's gonna be packed.
Well, I mean, we can look at it like, you know, the Legion or whatever.
Legion, maybe a fire station, something like that.
Right, yeah.
I don't, I don't think this is intending for that meeting. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, inviting that many people, we probably wouldn't have to look for a different place than this room, but.
Cause they got the wrong table. That's over thirty percent turnout mark. That's impressive.
Never know.
I bet they'll get more than that. They won't get on board, but they'll come here. That's right. Face, face total bring them here.
So.
The sooner the better.
I'd say, so just, next week, planning and zoning confirm a day with them, the sooner we can get it done, we'll do it. Okay.
Just for, just for my own argument sake, uh, to say that we were trying to kind of back into this and not be very, uh, upfront and forthright. Would be somewhat inaccurate, uh, because of, the timeline, as far as I remember it was, we discussed this planning and zoning. Went through and looked at it and had a meeting regarding it. And then our planning and zoning board went to the county planning and zoning board and had a meeting with them, correct?
Correct.
And then we as a city council addressed it again two, uh, two weeks ago. And then the fourth iteration was at the county planning and zoning meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So four public, four public postings of that per se is in, in our agendas, different agendas.
At least, cause we've talked a lot at the P and Z level where those are agendas. Anybody can come, talked about joint jurisdiction, so, yeah, at least.
Just making sure I did my math correctly.
Anything else for Teresa?
I do have a question on the, um, street assessment. What happens to corner line owners? Do they pay both sides or just their address side?
They get a, so are you talking about the street maintenance or the street assessment like Nicholson?
The one we just passed for.
The maintenance one is just on their front edge.
Just the front edge.
Yep, yep.
So a corner line just pays on the address side?
Just on the address side, yep.
Somebody asked me, so thank you.
Yep, exactly. So, um, the only other thing I just have a question to run by you guys too. I was renewing billboard leases. They're coming due towards the end of the year. A few of them are anyway. And I ran across one. We have a billboard out there that has, um, ABR intake on it and then put off, uh, rents a portion of it. Well, it subleases from ABR and it's been doing that for years like that. And that's the only subleased one we have. We have since changed our policy where we don't allow subletting. So I guess I just want some direction from you guys. Is it, this is just a renewal? If they wanna renew that way, is it okay? Or should I basically let them know, okay, you're gonna have to separate now and we're gonna have to do two separate leases?
Do they split?
ABR pays it all and then she subleases it to, we get our payment all from ABR.
They actually split the.
Oh, the, the half and half. Yeah, there's like half, one and half and one the other, so I mean.
Discuss this, in my opinion, was it, we were canceling or not renewing and starting on the new leases.
Okay. And, and this being, you know, it wasn't a brand new one. It's just a renewal. So I just want clarification on that. Kind of the way I was gonna approach is that we'll just let them know that we no longer doing subleases, so if Putoff wants to stay on there, have to do a separate lease with the city.
Yep. Has the lease up on the billboards that are advertising for you to treat in plywood?
Tony.
Oh, okay. I am in touch with Tony about every couple of weeks saying, when are we gonna get those billboards on there? And he's always checking into it and he'll check with his guy.
Okay.
I did just last week, another email.
But didn't we also discuss putting in the lease that they have to put something on?
Yes, and we did. And, and Larry drafted that and all these new leases going on is that they have to put something up within ninety days to comply with the state law. That's the reason for it, yeah, the kind of drug. Okay, that's.
All right, nothing else. We'll move on to new business. We have two appointments to make tonight. First one is city engineer. That, at point, that bow engineering, we did city engineer. So move. Second discussion?
Just for the record, they're not the ones that missed the hundred percent overrun. It wasn't.
Well, we're already go there now. I'm gonna, Mitch is squirreling going E A N N E R.
All right, more discussion? Vote? Nelson?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Come on in.
Yep.
And first city attorney. At point Freebird Nelson and ask. First city attorney to a motion aside.
So move.
Second. Discussion. One, vote Brown?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
On Ice?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mark acted before the record. We have a letter, a letter from the attorney of the car. Really nice letter, but. Hope they've done. Big thing going on and requesting more investment down now.
Uh, and there's, they talked about the trees.
Trees, they want trees.
We were told trees would be planted and I, I need to refresh my memory.
Brought up the budget about two years ago.
Two years ago?
Um, and after, like I said, at that time, nothing got decided on it. Um, talking to Mitch and doing, you know, a lot more looking into it, that there's a lot more than just tearing out a panel and planting a tree in it and getting it to live. I mean, you need to have proper drainage, make sure you got water there, you know, just in case. So I mean, we brought it up that budget meeting and nothing ever happened with it, so it just kind of got.
Bend the towns that have really, 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 really nice planters hanging off like their street lights or whatever. I mean, they're just gorgeous. I think that would be.
Go a long way.
Go a long way in beautifying if they're gonna spend money on new fancy light poles or whatever they plan on doing.
They're looking at.
Versus trees in the sidewalk, cause that is nothing but.
They're hard to keep alive and just a lot of work.
And he wasn't told we're gonna do, he had come and requested or said, you brought the idea and you, and we said, we can check into it, get some prices and pick information. And Greg did check into it. That's when we discussed it.
We're having a pretty, you know, thorough discussion about that. And so I just, I just wanna address that. We were told trees would be planted and I would say that's not necessary.
They were told we would check into it.
Yes. Just out of curiosity, the ten thousand dollars that we approved for next year, was it four line poles or? No, this year was like holes. For the, for the twenty budget.
This year we really did designate. It's just for downtown improvements.
So did they plant trees if they really wanted to? With the money they allocated?
You guys still have to prove it. Yeah, you guys still have to prove it.
I don't think ten thousand.
But I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
Do it right and to keep alive.
To release any of that money that goes into their funds, still gotta come through the board, so.
They'd have to come get a concrete permit too, to remove concrete, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Or dig permit or whatever it's called. We got so many pieces of pavement flying out of Saint Olaf's. I'll make motion.
The executive session.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed?
May we appear?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed?